All right, let's please, hold this meeting in order. I gotta say this. At our last meeting, a lot of stuff was missed because we were doing a lot of talking. So I would hope that, you know, conversations, we go out in the hallway because we missed something and they couldn't pick up on an amendment that we brought before the body. So, we gotta cooperate.
That was at the council meeting.
Yeah, that was at our council meeting.
It was at our, our party.
Hold it, hold it. It was at our committee meeting that we had here. Wasn't in the council meeting. All right, um, we're, we're here with the Board of Ed. I'm gonna ask everybody that's on the committee first to introduce themselves. I'm Councilman Ernie Newton, 139th District.
Scott Burns, co-chair of Budget Appropriations 130th.
Amy Marie Vizovnicchia, Councilwoman 134th District, member of Budget Appropriations Committee.
Rolando Schwick, Councilwoman 132nd.
Nita Martinez, 139th.
Freddie Hodges, Councilmember of 136th, committee member.
Oh, I'm sorry. Maria Pereira, 138th, I'm not on.
Maria, your budget 137?
Dash's Battle, 132nd.
Jeanette, Jeanette Heron. Budget Committee, Richard Ortiz, 135th, Budget Committee Member.
Okay, the Board of Ed people are gonna introduce themselves.
Hey, my name is Royce Avery, the International Superintendent for Public Schools.
Next up, your board, CFO.
Ken, come on, Ken, who are you?
Uh, Captain Plato Finance.
Okay.
Frank Benner, your OPM.
Kathleen Brickett, OPM.
In the back over here.
Joseph Calvic, Bridgeport Board of Ed.
Sengita Bella, Bridgeport Board of Education.
Mark Hughes, Bridgeport Board of Ed.
Um, Castello, Bridgeport Board of Ed.
Chris White, Bridgeport Board of Ed.
People right here.
Oh, Victory Reductions, Patrick Barry Jackson.
Um, Linda Jackson, Castle Linda Jackson, Vicente Jackson.
Right here.
Callie Hyman, Bridgeport Generation Now.
Did I miss anybody? I didn't miss anyone? All right, we've got some things that need to be exhibited first. I would ask Councilwoman Jeanette Heron to exhibit these items, not for debate, but just to make a point that I wanted to make.
Okay, um, New Haven, this is an article devastating to our school city could cut 129 positions programming. This is for a New Haven article. It would be 0507-2025A. Second, Amy Marie.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next.
The next item is Hartford Public Schools. This article, it will be exhibited as 057-072025B. Second, Amy Marie.
All in favor?
Aye.
The next one, Norwalk School Budget Cut Cap Threatens 121 Jobs. It's exhibit 0507-2025C. Did that get Amy right?
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, this one, Opening Budget YOY Increase, BOE Contributions YOY Increase. It will be exhibited as 0507-2025D. Did that get Amy right?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, this is just for our statement of purpose. Uh, it's not about discussing it, it's not about debate, but I want it on the record for a reason. And then we have another one that, Scott will introduce, he already introduced it, it's just for the record because I think it's important that people know what's really, what's happening in the state. The first one, oh, I'm sorry, we got one more exhibit from the Board of Ed.
Let me get out.
One more is coming.
Uh, one more after this?
Yeah, we could start with this, doesn't matter.
I'm just waiting for them to get their books.
Um, we were also joined by Councilwoman Mary McBride Newey, who has joined us. She's a committee member.
Okay, I am going to exhibit DPS Budget Request 2025-20, uh, 26 as 0507-2025E. Second, Amy Marie.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, I gave you all a few documents because I think it's important that the truth can be told. Yes, sir, can you just have two, please, a talk? That people believe and understand that Hartford, New Haven, I think Waterbury's in here, I think, no? Get more money than Bridgeport. I want it on the record because the truth has never been told, that the reason Hartford and New Haven get more money? Because of Chef versus O'Neal? When I was in the legislature, Ms. Chef sued the state of Connecticut, she won, and we've been paying for it ever since. New Haven, which was smarter than Bridgeport, did the magnet schools. And if you go to New Haven, it's nothing but magnet schools. They got more money. Bridgeport didn't do it. I want to show that Bridgeport is not the only one or Board of Ed that's fallen hard times. So I wanted that for the record because no one is saying that. And people believe that Bridge, that Hartford and New Haven get more money. But they're both, right now, laying off teachers. So they couldn't be getting a hell of a lot of money more if they gotta be in the same situation Bridgeport's in. And there's some smaller towns like Bloomfield and some other places in serious trouble. So I wanted to make that part of the record because when you say something, you need to know why those municipalities get more money than Bridgeport. And that is the reason why they get it. And I know, because I was in the legislature, when Chef versus O'Neal happened. I was in the legislature when New Haven chose to do magnet schools. Go to New Haven, ninety percent of their schools are magnet schools, so they get more money. So I had to put that on the record because nobody says that, or why do you get more? I want to turn it over to my co-chair to talk about the bondedness. Is that it? That's not it? All right, well, I'll let, I'll let someone else talk about the bondedness. All right, we got one more.
Okay, everybody got this big one. It says, uh, Bridgeport School District FY 2025 Year and Projections as of April 30th, 2025 will be 0507-2025F. Second, Amy Marie.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, say it. Okay, I'm gonna turn this over to my co-chair. Just making something part of the record. We're right here, sir.
Yeah, so, shh. The, uh, table and old chart, uh, which Councilwoman Heron exhibited for us as D, shows the budget increases for the city of Bridgeport on its operating budget, as well as the, uh, city contribution to the Board of Ed. And it averaged out as well, uh, for the five years which, um, Councilman Newton and I have been co-chairing committee. You know, not, not to go crazy or crazy overboard or anything like that, but the bottom line is, we've given a greater increase to the Board of Ed in the last five years than the overall increase of the budget. So, uh, we have made a concerted effort to increase funding to the Board of Ed. Two points I would add is in fiscal '22, we had proposed more, um, that budget never passed. So, that number remained flat. In addition, last year, we allocated, uh, in addition to the three million and quarter million for the facilities study, which has helped generate a, a path forward for how the school district may be moving, um, in the next one to ten years, I would, I guess, at least. So just to, you know, put some, some points out there.
And just to follow up, you're closing on this, I will say that your public facilities, gentlemen, worked very, we worked very good together utilizing the monies that came from Washington down to Hartford. We were partners. And we did a very good job on picking up, helping out. We both shared in that. And I want you to know that we're appreciative of that. So that you know that we've tried to work together. And, um, the last piece is, and it's already the budget. And Nestor's here, we can confess to it. That even with the school guards, school crossing guards, City of Bridgeport picked that up so that the Board of Ed didn't have to deal with that. So we have tried to work together to try to make this a better place. I'm gonna ask Frank to speak on the, um, where's your girlfriend again?
There is. The, the debt service for the Board of Ed is included in the city side of the budget. It's about eighteen point four million dollars.
That's, that's just for this year.
Yeah.
That's not counting the past years. And that was one of, I'm not gonna say his name, but he would always make that a point, that we helped the Board of Ed in other ways. That if they had to pick it up, there's no way they could do it. So, we've got, I did this because everybody wanna make it sound like we don't do nothing for the Board of Ed. And I can tell you, when the, when the children were getting, had to walk those extra miles, there was the City Council that put money in so that they didn't have to walk that extra quarter mile, hour and a half. We did that. I'm gonna turn it over to the superintendent, and then I'll let Frank go through.
Good evening, Ray. Good, uh, thank you for the opportunity to come, uh, to see things to kind of talk a little bit about our, our budget. Uh, I'm gonna have Nestor kind of give you guys an overview, but I just kind of wanted to kind of set the stage for the conversation. Again, being new in, in the seat, you know, almost seven minutes down, I think it's, it's been, uh, a very, you know, enlightening the opportunity to come in and kind of take over a situation and try to make it better. Uh, and I've been, I'm, I'm very grateful to the opportunities I've had to engage City, uh, City Council, uh, this, the City of Bridge, Bridgeport, the Mayor's Office, and trying to really figure out how we're, we're gonna be able to do this thing collectively together. I'm just one of those kind of guys where it's, it takes, it takes a, a village, a, a city to build an educational system. So we can't just stop where we are. We always have to look to the future to do better, right? Uh, as, as educators, uh, as City Council members, as, uh, city officials, we all have to be able to figure it, we have to fight the fight together. Uh, and this has been challenging. And so, um, we're here, we're, we're going to, we're gonna figure it out. We're gonna take the necessary steps to be able to do the right thing for, on behalf of the children of this, of this great community. Uh, and, uh, we, we can't just, you know, buy down and not do anything. So, yes, there's going to be opposition about who does what, when, how, what, where. It's okay. Uh, as long as we agree to disagree, let's, at the, at the end of the day, when we, when we close the doors, we have to feel comfortable that we're doing, doing our best to, to provide what our children need in this community. And as an educator, uh, that's what we're all, that's what we're, that's what I'm grounded on in doing this work. And so, I'm, I'm privileged to have, you know, Nestor here to, uh, provide you with an overview of, of where we were, where we are now, and to look into the future of the finances within our history. And so, Nestor, I'm gonna turn it over to you, and, uh, and then we'll give you guys enough to meet, uh, that's what I'm thinking.
Good evening, everyone. Um, I gave, I did give out, uh, handout, two handouts. I'm going to start with a powerpoint, which is the-
That's E. That's Exhibit E.
Exhibit E. That's what I'm gonna start with. Uh, it's basically a powerpoint. You kind of highlight the Board of Education budget breakdown, uh, possible issues or concerns that are there. Then I'll start with finish with that. He gives some statistics also of the number of students, the classes and everything related to Board of Education. Comparing Bridgeport Board of Education, NCEP, which is net pupil, per pupil expense, two other towns in the entire 166, uh, history in Connecticut. So, when we finish going through it, then we're gonna dive into the details, which is the big, this big spreadsheet, which itemizes the line item issues with Board of Education and the actions that the board have taken to try to remedy or try to, I'm gonna use the word, balance the budget, but to some degree, I'm going to be mild about it, devastating cuts. They're severe. So we're gonna start with this, what we've now, um, look, out of the 166 school districts in Connecticut, Bridgeport is 162. Bridgeport is spending sixteen thousand seven hundred seventy dollars per town, uh, when compared to other towns. Now, this number here, so, I just need to clarify this number because when you look at it in aggregate, yes, it's low in aggregate, but it's even much lower when you factor the cost of educating special education and ELL students. Before we get into that point, I'm just gonna give everybody a hint. Last year, the district spent 114 million dollars of the entire budget on special education. This year, well, it's going to end up this year, we're projecting 120 million dollars of the entire budget on special education. Then the extract of ELL, English as a Second Language, which is a little heavy, another heavy burden. If you weigh that in, you find, I mean, I'm not gonna admit, okay, it's a burden. Let me put it that way. When you extract those heavy costs, the cost of average regular student will be much, much lower. I hope everybody's got it. I don't wanna get too-
We understand what you're saying.
Because I'm being recorded here, so I have to be careful.
We understand, we, we understand, true.
Okay. Then, page eight is basically graphical, graphical aspect of what I just talked about as far as, uh, NCEP. Now, page, page nine is what they call the excess cost, meaning for special education students. You know, the state puts out all these mandates, all state mandates, unfunded state mandates, which most of the council or board members are very much aware. They tell you to make up all these rules and mandates and tell you they were funded, and it's pretty much unfunded state mandate. And here it is again, where we can see it. For them to reimburse you for excess cost you spend, you spend, or the district spends on a special ed student. The district must spend four and a half times the NCEP, so you're gonna have to spend four and a half times sixteen thousand seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars that it costs to train the student. You have to spend it four and a half times before this table say they're kicking in. They're kicking in at a subsidized rate, just a percentage. They're not kicking in to take the whole responsibility just to give me a little meat time, if you wanna look at it that way, or call it that. So, a typical example is given here. It's a little more technical with calculation, but I'm going to simplify it. If the district spends hundred thousand dollars on a, on a special education student, when you do the math, don't follow the math, but I'm gonna simplify it for everybody to understand. The bottom line is that the district spends hundred thousand dollars on a special ed student. The board of, the state is only gonna reimburse the district nineteen thousand dollars. The district eats up the third or the eighth thousand dollars before the state takes in and gives us some fees, uh, for some more money. But, again, to clarify things here, if the district doesn't spend up to four and a half times, the district eats up the whole cost. If we don't spend up to the eighty thousand, which will exceed the four and a half times required, we eat up the whole fifty thousand.
How long has that been going on? All right, that, that rests in my case. Okay, I understand.
But I, I just want everybody to understand, the state says they reimburse for excess cost. When you really start digging into it, you find out that it's purely unfunded state mandate.
You're saying that it's four times, four and a half times, so you're, but I'm trying to understand that you're, you're saying that typically, the Board of Education is not seeing this money at all?
Right. The only time they can see the money, you have to spend four and a half times more.
So when, when was the last time they saw some of this money?
Oh, we-
This is the time we have what I think.
We did get, just to clarify, we did get eight point five million dollars excess cost reimbursed. But that eight point five is netted, is netted against the 114 million dollars. So we spent more than 114 million dollars. It's only 114 million to his district account because we booked that reimbursement excess cost in the total expense. It's on next page, but, uh, but at the end of the day, the district is still liable, liable for 114 million dollars in special education.
The state only gave eight point five.
Right. On the next page, it says that.
The next page, it says that, but I figured I answered the final president's question.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, you're welcome. Then, with special education, this is the effort which is filed with the state of Connecticut, verified, confirmed, validated. Total budget, including our grants, is 29 million dollars, which is 114 million dollars that I talked about. But grants can only absorb so much. The operating budget eats up thirty-three point seven percent of special education costs, which is almost 2 million dollars of special education. It's district, the district operating budget. Now, people here about to get grants, what you're trying to say here is those grants are equally paid for on special ed. It's all spoken for, by the way. It's all one part of mine. And some of those grants are used to fund the ELL students. I mean, you know, there are, if, like I said here, you see the eight one six million dollars that this state reimbursed, but it's credited against or netted against the gross total expense. So the district still paid 114 million out of the district pocket. You wanna know the total 114 million of special ed, add the eight point six million to the 114 million. That is your gross total expense.
Yes, sir, you guys are good. You brought that in-house. How much did you save?
I have to be, I have to be honest with, I have to be honest with everyone here. The district will save some money, let no one expect miracle. There are some medical fragile students that the district cannot, no, no, no placement in Connecticut can actually handle them. There's one in New York that's a million dollars a year.
All right, okay, all right.
We will try to manage the ones in-house, the ones that are manageable, anything medical, fragile, frail or fragile, the liar doing is not worth it. But we pay the money, but we still save money, but it's a good thing to do to bring them in-house because what's happening, what is it called, open choice? If you don't, if you don't have the capacity to provide it to them here, if mom has a choi, a choice, you take them out. You have no reward. But if you can prove you have the same facility, then you tell them.
All right, all right.
So that's, that was the whole idea. School allocation budget, or operating budget for the schools, is basically based on allocating twenty, twenty, twenty-five dollars per student based on the number of students in the school. So it's fair and equitable sharing for teacher to buy supplies and everything. So, if somebody has, depending on the size of the school, it's all population free, which is more an fair and equitable way of, 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 of operating budget. So that's the way it's allocated. Twenty-five dollars per student goes with thousands of students, get more money, basically a thousand times forty-five dollars for fortunately. Teachers saw, teachers told, parent engagement, demand dollars per student is based on, for them to do parent engagement in the school. Here, what does the operating budget fund? Everyone can go through it. Principal, teachers, special ed tag, absence coverage, family services, teachers' absence.
All right.
Everything, you don't have to. The same thing's physical challenges, wealth, special education, of course, uh, utility costs, uh, English as a Second Language, absence coverage, who isn't that? Absent, absence coverage is not cheap, very expensive. The teachers, yeah, very, not cheap, uh, capable thing, yeah. Very, but each time a teacher is absent, you gotta bring in a, a substitute teacher. Then workers can, they have their own workers' pensions. The operating budget request. The total operating budget request is 348 million dollars is what we, what we would need, the monetary need. And that monetary need, what it means is that there's sixty-seven point eight million dollar budget gap in 2026. Okay, let me refrain, let me refrain and come back to establish how we got there. But when we get to the big spreadsheet, we're gonna get to how we get to the sixty-seven. When, when I got, when I did the first financial report at Board of Education, I realized that the current year budget, F-25 budget, was adopted using a one-time revenue, in terms of the fund of 26 million dollars. I mean, when I saw it, my eyes rolled and, uh, I really had, when I went and presented my first monthly financial report to the board, I said, this honestly, I have to be honest with everyone here. Numerically, this budget is balanced, numerical. Financially, we adopted a 26 million dollars budget deficit. Which you have no, if you don't have the money to replenish it, you're starting next year with a 26 million dollars gap with nothing to back you up, plus a novel cost of living increase between 12 and 14 million dollars. So, you're already in the 40 million dollars. So, but we will get to it, but that's how, that's one-time use of money because it will not re, re, or exist. It has to be carried over into next year. Then we get into, when we come to special education, we see how much, how far special education costs have gone up. In six years, it went up 30 million dollars. But we will get to it. So, therefore, you make compound an issue, but-
Yes, sir, any of this, that's just question, you can move on. So you need to tell me because Bridgeport had that opportunity to do the same thing. We chose not to do it.
Do the what?
To use all that money. And then have to worry about how we're gonna get it back, and the state don't help us, and we don't raise taxes. So we didn't do that.
Well, I, I can-
Okay, but I'm just saying, no one in the Board of Ed realized that if you spend all this money, you ain't getting it back because it was a one-shot deal from, from the government. And they used it. So I don't know who was advising them. Okay? Because if you spend, you're absolutely right. That's why if our Budget Committee didn't do that for us, if you did, it might not be here next time. That money might not be here.
Well, I mean, you're very, at that meeting, that's, I, I generally picked my mind. I told them, invest, before I even came to the meeting, I already put out district-wide operational account creed.
All right, I just wanted to make that clear.
But I gave them, we came up with a plan. As we go along, you're gonna see that we did not use up all the 26 million dollars. We had to take some corrective budget action, not to use up the full 20. We did some prudent, hard, just give board that way. Ball, Dr. Avery, I would say. But I know, my job is to inform. I come up with a plan.
So you didn't use all 26, because don't you say you used all 26?
Well, yeah, it was adopted.
It was adopted, but you didn't use it up. How much of it did you use?
This year, we're using 22 million dollars. Now, let's not forget, we're using 22 million dollars this year to balance the budget. Now, let's not forget, we're using twenty-two million dollars this year to balance the budget, we did some layoffs already. We, and let's not forget, the special ed costs went up six million dollars this year, more than what was budgeted. We're fighting two battles. Yeah?
Okay, you can go on with the next question.
So, all, all in all, this is basically what it does, it shows how much money is the city has allocated each year toward Board of Education, city share or city tax, and how much of, how much has come from the state, which is the regular ECS and the Alliance. When you look at the state website, they carve, when they carve out money, they call it ECS. It's actually a combination of Alliance and regular ECS. So when you see ECS go up a three quarter for any town, the only number that goes up is the Alliance part. The reg- the regular state ECS allocation has been permanently fixed for the last forty something years, this hundred and forty-four million, that's why you haven't got off a penny, I mean, it stays stable, they give the money through Alliance whereby they know they are not locked by state law. Probably beyond the minimum and beyond. But in this, in this request here, when you see the hundred and three million dollars on the city share, well, the board wanted to ask the city to basically contribute twenty-five million dollars towards Board of Education budget for F Y twenty-six, so that's why you see hundred and three million dollars request. What is expected, the city, yeah? Come up with twenty-five million to help with gap.
Why are you looking at me? Why are you looking at me, you was, just remember, you was our budget person, so you know, we got to figure out, you know how hard it is, we can't even close a sixty million dollar deficit that we got.
Okay, the next page is page sixteen, this is a breakdown by category, how the board spends their money, or how, where, where the board spends their money. What category the board spends their money, as you can see, transportation, tuition, and salary increases. Now, let me clarify something. What also contributed to this increase in, in that city? The district used ESAM money to fund a lot of positions and a lot of programs because they allow it. And, you know, when the ESAM money is no longer there, then we have to literally pay to amount out of the operating, so that's what you're saying. So, I mean, that's what it is. The next page is page seventeen, you see the graph, forty-nine percent of the budget is, forty-nine percent is salaries, forty percent is benefits. Eleven percent is transportation, eight percent is tuition, relatively, I think you're looking at eighty, eighty, eighty percent. We haven't talked about utilities and everything, I think, that's all of them. The cost. The next page is page eighteen, student enrollment is basically the same thing that I've talked about as far as student enrollment relative to ELL and spread students comparatively. The, okay, page, page nineteen, this is very interesting. Patricia, Patricia, Patricia that worked in my office, it took a while, it's very hard to do, to really dig and carve out, break down what costs associated with special education by category. Teachers, instructors, other salaries, the benefits, foster services, foster services is more of a care services, one-to-one parent, out-of-district placement and all those things, but it's all broken down. You've got to see that, like I said, it's hundred and fourteen, was hundred and fourteen million dollars in twenty twenty-four, this year we're going to spend one twenty million dollars, hoping that our projection is right, you cannot control the placement of special education. Once they do an IEP, you own it. So, but if you compare these six years, the budget went up, just on special education, the budget went up thirty million dollars, you see here. And it's something that no one has control, well, to some degree, no one, it's law, it's legal, it's the law.
So if we can keep them in-house, that thirty million would stay here?
Not all of it, but most of it. But again, we, the district or the district have to start now practicing how to be efficient. Right now is the time to do all the training, make all the mistakes, do all the learning. Therefore, trust yourself, when the doors open, you already know and what works and what doesn't. Because you tried it on a smaller scale.
Let me clarify that a little bit as well, I think what you have to understand is that the reason why the district had to place kids out of district because the district didn't have programs in district to serve those kids. So families have a choice to be able to say, you don't have the necessary programs in district, so I choose to go out of district. So what we're having to do now is build upon the programs that we serve kids in district right now. That's, that's, you know, different types of programs that will service different types of kids, their disabilities, and then you have to have the appropriate staff to be able to do that way too, so OTPT, you know, all the different services that we provide, you have to do that internally and do it very well, so when we build a program, they will come. So we say, parents, we now have those programs in districts, so we're going to be recommend, recommending that you come back to the district because we can serve your kids best, and most families are very open to that because they know we're going to take care of their children. You give them a chance to explore the programs, come back in, see it, feel it, and experience it, and then you buy, they buy in, so that's the, that's the beauty of what we're trying to do now.
We went further by trying to break it down, carve out, out of the entire special ed population of students. How many of them are actually out of, or how, what amount are we spending on out of district, and it's broken down for that year. So of all the special ed expenditures, you've got to spend about fifty-one million dollars in out of district. And it's broken down by tuition, transportation, medical, so I don't want people to think that if you build a school, you're going to save the whole hundred and fourteen million dollars, that's not going to happen. I just want to be clear, you, you know, you're going to be enabling between the fifty million, fifty-one million dollars that you can bring in-house here, then making your program, in-house program, much more efficient to really have special ed to kids or children graduate out of this special ed program and not make it the longer period, I mean, there ought to be some assessment and, you know, assess your success rate and find out what works and what doesn't to be, have it better, in-house, much more efficient. Regardless that if, whether you're doing it in-house or not, the success story will matter. When it comes to page twenty, it's basically what the district is obligated, it's relative to wages, it's broken down by union, it's inclusive of market increase, salary increase, Medicare, Social Security attributable to annual salary increase, including all the teachers and all the regular employees, administrators and everything. One thing I have to make clear here, the teacher's pension is, is being, or being absorbed by the state, the teacher's pension. Without it, I'm serious, if the state wasn't covering the teacher's pension, you're looking at another eighty million dollars.
But we're not talking about, we're talking about teachers, teaching, we okay, didn't we pay?
That's my point.
But they, they take the state's pension, yeah, all right.
We're lucky, well, I'm just.
I haven't heard, you know, them saying they're going to not do it anymore, so.
That, that it, tried it the first time Lamont came on.
But he didn't go nowhere.
He tried it, yeah. Okay, transportation is basically breaking down the transportation, we do have a five-year contract which expires twenty twenty-six, up to twenty twenty-six. Basically, this is break down by category, by school, regular bosses, special education, parochial school, charter schools, we are responsible for charter school transportation. So basically based on the cost and special ed transportation, it's going up by two million dollars next year, projected to grow by two million dollars.
Does this have anything to, do you save any money because the board voted to extend the walk, so? Do you save any money with that, I don't know?
Yes, okay, this, what, what you're, what was being presented to you tonight is what was presented to the board in, as a budget request. Then when we get into this spreadsheet, like I said, you're going to see the actions the board have taken to streamline or close this sixty-seven million dollar projected gap for twenty twenty-seven. Twenty twenty-six, I'm sorry. I'm ahead of myself, so if nothing changes, especially at, at special education, we're going up by two million dollars. But again, some actions were taken by the board, you're going to see the contract here, the five-year contract, it goes through F Y twenty twenty-seven, the percentages are there. Operating budget is pretty much how much the city's, this is for current year, how much the Board of Education received from the state. Again, they call it ECS, ECS is inclusive of Alliance and regular ECS. So far, for twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, this city contributed seventy-eight point five million dollars to what? Board of Education operating budget. And pretty much, the next page twenty-four shows you the allocation, city allocation by year relative to the entire Board of Education budget, the state allocation or state percentage, and the board, of course, asking for twenty-five million dollars to close the gap. Current year gap. Well, these are the options for capital measures, you know. Then after that, we can go into the details, which is the numbers, basically show everyone the actions the board have taken to close the sixty-seven million dollars, well, to close current year gap as well as next year gap, I did the, I did express it simultaneously, so everyone will see them running parallel to one another, instead of looking at, at that gap, they're all running concurrently with one another, the same pattern, the same two rows, so when we are ready, we can go to this big page. Okay. So basically, like I started saying.
Anyone have any questions on the first page?
We want to just finish this.
All right, let's do this, let's do this. Let them finish their presentation, let them do this long document first, then we'll ask the questions, because remember what you want to ask, you want to show.
So we'll, we'll do the questions on this first?
Yeah, let's do the question on the short end.
All right, so I have, in order, as best as I can tell, we go committee members first, for those who are not familiar with our process. So Councilman Hareens, Council President Nieves, Councilwoman Lee, Councilwoman Martinez, Councilwoman Spell, Councilwoman Pete.
Nestor, I want to commend you, and I know I give you a hard time every single year. This is the first time that we've gotten a budget with numbers and not bullet points, so we can actually see where, you know, things are and are not, which I, I'm grateful for. I can't say that I can blame anybody here, very few people that were here were there in the past. But I remember now bringing this in-house, I know that has to go through a vote. We tried to do this many, many years ago with Fran Rubinowitz, and it was voted down. If it would have been voted then, we wouldn't be in this, this shape with special ed. Albert's shaking his head, but as he knows, yeah, we've been here a long time. You know, I'm in agreement to bring it in-house, but I'm going to just say this like I say all the time, our legislators do what they can up there. Our governor, I think it was a year or two, had stated that we have to take all, incur at all costs for the ELL, for the for the out of, the non-documented, and we all know, non-documented, a lot of them are special ed as well, so those services overlap, and that's where we've had a problem because it's been depleting our school funds, and I'm just saying it because I'm on both ends. I want to know from you, I'll wait for the numbers here because I'm going to go into crunch with you, but be, be aware, I want to know what is needed just for the bus, to make the bus hold that you're in a negative now for, that's what I want, but I, I wanted to just thank you and give that little history of Fran because people around here know this was voted against at one point, so I want to make that clear.
Okay, thank you, Council, uh, Council President Nieves.
Hi, I'll see you next week, so I have a question on page sixteen, I'm, I'm looking at a couple of hours, you mentioned the tuition, transportation, and benefits. So in twenty-five, if, if you adopted as a budget, it drastically different.
Yep.
So my question to you is, I know that everybody feels you gathered one-shot deals, now, I'm only asking because reflectively, you're telling me that, that the one-shot deal maybe put into transportation was about eleven million, and you, it was underestimated, it should have been more, that's, then it, it's gone up by you. So eleven million, actually, eleven, and then, and the tuition is the same thing, so I'm just asking, are these lines and the benefits line, are these where you did one-shot deal, where previously the board adopted one-shot deals with extra money or other money? Same thing with utilities? So then that means that you started with a negative kind of in twenty-five because you had to make up for what you underfunded in twenty-four? Is that, is that, am I saying that correctly or am I?
Through, through each year, that is correct, again, if you recall, I indicated that there are some expenses where charged to asset, meaning they were generalized to asset, meaning the expenses were generalized to asset because they could not be contained in the operating budget, so the budget should be the expenses to asset at play. With the, yeah, what happened.
I'll follow up in a minute, I just got to bring my question.
Okay?
Yeah, I'll, I'll back your question.
All right, go to, uh, Reverend Lee.
Uh, before I ask my question, uh, I want to address my president, and, and my co-chair down there, I want to address you all first. I really feel discriminated against, and the simple reason is that I feel like whoever come, I don't care if my superintendent that can find me tomorrow and he can get enough votes, you know, the first one comes should be first served. We can't hold seats for anybody when they come up in here, you know, I feel like Rosa Parks today, you know.
You didn't have my seat, Brad, you didn't have my seat?
No, my daughter, my niece gave me her seat, because I can't sit in over a seat like that. I don't like feel, be, be discriminated against, and that's what's wrong with the Board of Ed right now because now I'm asking my question, I'm like, I ain't gonna say, I ain't gonna say.
You're going to try to keep it calm?
No, I, I, I'm from Alabama, there's some things I just can't be calm about, I'm sorry, you know, man, I'm not disrespectful, you know, I'm getting off of that now. I just want you to know how I feel, I don't like feeling like Rosa Parks. Now, the thing that I'm going to say about this is right here, now I'm on, I'm on my right track now, okay? Thank you for listening, Eddie, uh, the thing about it is, is that, uh, um, superintendent, how long have you been the, uh, assistant superintendent of what, whatever you did?
I'm the acting.
I can, yeah.
The age of school superintendent is since November the thirteenth.
Okay, and you know, the fact of the matter is that I say all this, the reason we can't get our stuff together because when you get get our stuff together, because when you get your feet wet, when you get your foot look wet, then all of a sudden, well, how's he doing? A woman can't have a baby for, for months, you know, she gotta have nine muscles in there, you know what I mean? And it, and, and we have to give you a chance to put your plan to work and see how we can raise some money, by the time you figure it out, then you gone, you understand what I'm saying? And the thing that I want to ask next is, is my second question, I'm not gonna go over. Nestor, the, the, the substitute, what happened to that money? That, you know, when, when, when we have a substitute, when we out?
Yep.
And then we don't have a substitute come in, but they, um, but they, uh, split class, so, so therefore, we don't use that money, but, and we don't get paid for split class. So if we have, is there any money, you know, that we benefit, when we don't have a substitute come in?
No, uh, through each year, actually, a teacher being absent is, you want to put it that way, is called unexpected expense, which the district council of dog, meaning that the teacher still gets paid, getting a substitute from the agency is added burden to the budget.
So the, so the Board of Ed is not responsible for the substitute?
There are, but what I'm trying to say is, is kind of added burden, because the budget, when it was plotted, captured the full salary of the teacher for the full year, that the teacher is out, being paid, bringing a substitute from the agency is adding additional cost.
Oh, oh, really? Yeah, I'm getting asked, it's a lot of though, you know, I'm not.
Unless, unless the teacher, when they're out, they're not getting paid, I mean, yeah?
When we're out, we have Christmas Day.
Oh, okay.
They get paid.
That's, 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 yeah.
Yeah, uh, 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 I, I want to say, Nestor, thank you for making a presentation tonight, because this goes back to discrimination. I, as long as I, I been on the council, I have never heard the person at any old seat make a presentation to this council, and I think I've been here all over the long of my share of my career down there, they have never, and nobody questioned it. So now, you said some stuff tonight, that I didn't even know myself, because she never came, and she was making good money, she was drugging herself, I hope you make that guy.
All right, uh, please.
Councilwoman Martinez.
And if you have food, so, if you eat, please be quiet, go get some food, keep it quiet.
Nestor, the tuition, how much did you have here?
Those are for out of, out of business.
Okay, out of the, okay, what is your other services?
Other services, basically, pay like tenant services, well, substitute teachers, people with, like, what I'm saying, when vacancy is keeping soon, then out of, out of, other agencies, question.
All right, let me go now, too, software, books, and supplies.
Right.
F Y twenty-four, fifty-nine, nine hundred and twelve thousand.
Okay.
And we're going, we're going to twenty twenty-five, we're going up to a million.
Yep.
Then twenty twenty-five is increased by a couple hundred bucks, then twenty twenty-six, we're going down a couple, round off, maybe around forty bucks. Where are the books, software, and the supplies that you are listing here? Because let me tell you something, my baby goes, she was at Park City Magnet, okay? Special ed program, receives zero books, okay? She's currently at High Horizon, and I have to tell you that, when she transferred over to High Horizon, she's autistic, she has now learned how to write her name, learned her alphabet, and is learning her numbers. And she's twelve years old, but while she was at Park City Magnet, she did not receive one book. To this very day, she does not come home with a book, so I want to know what software, what books, and what supplies are we paying for? Are they for office staff supplies, software and books? Because the school system definitely isn't giving out any books.
I, I can, uh, through here, I can kind of address that question.
Please.
From, from my observation coming in, a lot of, a lot of the, the instructional materials that was, they were, that was purchased, was the online instructional materials, so they, they kind of, the last couple of years, they kind of moved away from old traditional books where kids have them, have them in their hands, until they went to, when they, when they started COVID, they went to the devices, so everything that was purchased was really purchased to be part, to be put or utilized from the I G A S.
So they should not, they shouldn't state books, because those are not classroom books, they're packages.
There are some books, there are some books, but, you know, and some consumable books, where there's like worksheets within the books, so some of that was purchased, but not a lot of it.
So where are the computers? But she doesn't have computer, neither in the class or bring home, she bring home no homework, even if she's special ed, it doesn't matter?
Yeah, and, and, and I could tell you that that's one of the, the areas that the state technical assistance team is working with us on, because we have a lot of work to do within our special education division, in order to maximize instructional practices with, with, um, within all campuses in the district. Because when, you know, from my experience, you know, as an educator for almost thirty-plus years, you know, special education kids should be included into the regular environment. Bridgeport have a limited, you know, engagement with special ed kids in the regular environment. That mean, that, that means they're, you know, engaging in academics, you know, uh, you know, specials, art music, you know, art music P E, all those things, we don't do that very well in this district, and we're not, we're moving towards making that, that better, so hopefully over the next couple of years, we're gonna see that change, because you're spot on, you know, what we're doing in those special ed classrooms are, it's a tr- a tragedy to our kids, because a lot of time, you walk into a special ed classroom, there's no teaching going on, at all, and so I'm aware of that, my staff is aware of that, uh, and we're, we have a, a plan to fix that as well.
Listen, now, my view of that subscription, and this is a co-chair, uh, membership subscription, what does that entail?
Oh, it's a membership, you, you go off a little more. I mean, national.
Thank you.
Sure, Councilwoman Spell.
So my first question is, um, when the five one three, have you actually started utilizing that?
We have not really explained, we, it's there, we've explored it, we have, a few board members have asked a lot of questions around what it is, how much money is in there, you know, but utilizing it in a way where we were advocating additional funds to go there, in order to pay for certain things, we haven't really did a, a good enough job there on that, but that is an avenue that we will be exploring to, again, you know, solicit other nonprofits to be able to kind of say, can we have money, soliciting for additional grants and things, to be able to tie back into that as well, so that is, that should be a self-sufficient funding mechanism for the district, to be able to kind of maximize, you know, things for teachers, things for administrative, things for kids, scholarships for kids, all those types of things, but we just need to do a better job with that, is there, it's functional, it's, if there's money there, all of those, all of those factors.
Nestor, um, through the tiers.
Yep.
In regards to the charter programs in the city, so you gave us a roundabout number of how many for our out-of-district kids, how much technically would say, when it comes to our active kids who are in charter program?
Charter school?
Yeah.
How much you call the district?
Yeah.
Uh, one, two, we, uh, when you talk, okay.
What page is this?
No, I'm talking about, for example, if we didn't have those charter schools, how much would be going back into the school district? Because you're not doing transportation, and the money does follow the kids.
No, we're doing transportation for charter.
Right, I mean, if you wasn't.
Okay.
So, for example, from my understanding, when I did my research, when a child is in a charter school, they get transportation, they get special education.
Right, that's right. From the district?
From the district.
Yes.
In addition, certain funds follow the kids.
That's right.
So what would be the number figure, if the kids weren't at the charter school, but they were in V P S classroom? Do you see where I'm going with this?
Yeah.
Because you, because you just told us about the out-of-district, but you have people in the district, and we're losing, and we're still losing money. So I, can, we have that number three?
I don't know, right?
Okay. Send them, and I'll give them to you.
Basically, you follow, are you trying to say, if every kid are coming to Bridgeport school? How much would the state would have been giving up for their kids? Is that what you're trying to get to, I don't know, how much would the state would have given up in more additional money for their kids? Is that what you're trying to, I don't know, I don't.
Through here, let me, let me kind of clarify, what she's asking, we, we currently have about six thousand students that live in recent public school facilities, that do not go to our school, so those six thousand kids go outside to charter school, broker schools, other districts, we're still connected and paying for those kids to provide services. What she's asking is, do we have a number of what that, what, what that is to service those kids outside, those six thousand kids, you know, we don't have a number for that, there's a, there's a lot of integral pieces to kind of connect those to it, we can, we can, you could possibly look at, if there is a, like capital prep, we may have a hundred kids in capital prep, we, we know what per people expenditure that we provide, capital prep, we also know how many kids are taking, using grants, so we can do that calculation, but it's gonna take a little bit of time to do that, and I, I can do another thing.
The council, the, the council, we provide councilors to them, we provide special ones to them, we provide fatality to them, so these are fractional, and, you know, you gotta keep, keep them all together, I mean, it's like, that means a lot of, oh.
Um, great question.
Thank you.
Can, Council President?
Okay, yes. So here's my question, that, I'm going back to before, um, about the one shot deal on the extra fund is, I'm trying to figure out, so you use the extra fund, but that, in your, in your projections, then that's, you use twenty million dollars of your service fund to close the gap, which would have kind of been a surplus, but since you underfunded, might, underfunded because of the increases, but these increases from year to year, from twenty-five to twenty-six are astronomical, so that means that initially, the adopted budget of, let's say, transportation was probably under, underfunded.
Yes.
And you're underpaid, so you had to use your service fund, so technically, when you're coming into twenty-six with a twenty, twenty, twenty-three million dollar deficit, it's not be underfunded, but you covered with your service fund, it was forty-three?
Yes.
So that, that's what I, that's where the, that's where, to me, that biggest issue starts.
Well, I think, I, I think what I, when I introduced, when we started early, I kind of indicated that that's what happened, unless if I wasn't clear to the, but.
Maybe I didn't hear, because I got, I was coming from.
It's incomplete.
So, I guess this year, for this year's upcoming budget, how much of your internal service plan are you planning to use to, to this year?
What the board, for current year, the board adopted twenty-six million dollars, but we were able to scale it down, when they realized that that's how the budget is being balanced, so current year, we scaled it down to twenty, twenty million.
Okay, so, my other question is, is that this year, your, 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 your numbers are more true than what is being reflected on this, because, see what it looks like to a person who doesn't understand this, this is why I'm speaking in terms of, it looks like you, you adopted fourteen million, but it's actually thirty-one million, and you were, somebody just, individual just won't understand, like, why in twenty-six, you went from fourteen million to thirty-three million? So I'm just trying to clarify that, because there's a lot of, you know, Mr. Nomar, corner?
Yeah.
So this year, the back to budget is true to the number of the real quarter, you know, without some, as you like to call it.
Well, no, I, we gotta be realistic, it, it's, the current year, year and quarter is real, reflecting of what number we, we see, what a number is not what's being forecasted, what's being forecasted is what is real.
Okay, we'll go in this order, uh, Burns, Lee, Pereira, uh, and then Kansas Plato's gonna add a little, uh, Tom X as well. So my question, uh, you know, same legal services lines here with special ed, and I know special ed can be contentious, uh, is that eating up a large portion of our special ed concerns, or, or the risks that are there, I don't, I don't know how we're, how we're handling that, I guess.
Yeah, I think, I think there's a balance there, because what happens when, you know, especially using special ed, legal, legal issues from the special ed side, when, when, when families feel that they, they've been somewhat discriminated against based on not providing the services and things like that, the legal bills can go up, you know, and so our, we challenge a family, because we feel we can do things in-house, other than in sending a kid out, so there's, there's some, there's some, some natural costs that comes into play there, and so, you know, but I think a lot of, when you look at these legal fees, I think the Board of Ed has also had some legal challenges over the last couple of years, that's why you see such a huge increase in that amount. We, we have proposed a decrease in that, you know, for this, this year's budget, due to the fact that we're gonna try to deal with, deal with the, the real issues that we have to deal with, instead of having to go out to outside camps to do that, and we are working with the city attorneys as well, to try to figure out a plan, to be able to kind of work this out a little bit better, maybe possibility of doing some other, uh, you know, in-house legal counsel, you know, that we can deal with, instead of having to go out, you know, and outsourcing every single thing that we have, out, we can do a lot more of that in-house, so there's some things and strategies that we're going to be considering to reduce that cost a lot, actually, so, that's a good plan for that, I feel, and it worked out pretty well for us.
All right, thank you. Uh, Councilman Lee, and then Councilman Pereira.
Um, do we know, uh, is it on here, um, you know, we, we gotta know that all of the libraries are gonna, people out there are gonna, you know, that's a lover, lover, uh, which is gonna be, uh, uh, you know, eliminated, and, uh, the vote before the five, probably forty-five, yeah, forty-five, and I want to thank my friend over there for voting over there, and, uh, but is, is it, do we know what they're, is that, is that written stone?
Through here, I, I think you make, you make a very valid point, one of the things that the board has, you know, uh, directed me to be able to do is to prioritize, you know, things that we're gonna bring back, you know, if we have, we, we got additional dollars, and so, I have a preliminary list, I hadn't really shared that with them yet, on areas and things that we can bring back if we have that cost reoccurred with a surplus of dollars, that we, that's gonna be, you know, granted to the district, so that's a possibility, you know, we still have to move forward, because we don't have those funds yet, uh, and so, as the board, uh, adopted that twenty-nine, thirty million dollar cut last Monday, we have to move forward with that, so as we, if, if this summer, we get enough funds, additional funds, to be able to bring things back, like librarians or pre-K paras and things like that, that's what we're gonna be doing, so I have an internal list, that I will start, you know, you know, you know, bringing back if I get the additional dollars.
Okay, and I, I hope that everybody that's on that board, with this in their board, my friend over there said, uh, in the pink, you know, they think that was good, because it showed that not only is he thinking about the dollar, but he thinking about the kids' teeth, and that's the important thing, that's like, am I saying what you're asking?
Councilman Pereira?
Oh, yeah, I just wanted to, uh, when I left the school board in two thousand nineteen, we were spending about thirty-two hundred dollars, excuse me, three point two million dollars on charter, and, and we all have to pay for their special ed services and their bus transportation, I know somebody said there was other money following the child, but that's not in the state statute. I know somebody said there was other money following the child, but that's not in the state statute. The other thing is, there's a state law that the school board has to spend every month a dollar by June thirtieth. The money returns to the city. I don't know if anybody remembers, if Ramos didn't spend seven million dollars in two thousand and eight, and Phil Finch wanted it, and they went back. So I just want to comment, people are very critical about how they're spending their savings. I will tell you, when I joined the board in two thousand nine, there wasn't a dollar in the savings account. And the one good thing that Valas did was bring Marlene Segal. Because you can take millions and carry it to the next school year, but only if it's attached to a PO. But Marlene Segal realized, because we're the only district in the state that has an internal service fund, right? That was created by Febreze and Ramos. She realized that she could put batches of money in there, not have to attach it to a PO and spend it. If it wasn't for her realizing that, right? Because there's no other town in the whole school district in the whole state that's able to build a reserve, because it's against state law. She was smart enough to start putting money in there, and it doesn't have to be spent and attached to books or computers. And she created a rainy day fund that no other municipality in the state has. So I can't believe people are critical of it. It's something that a hundred and sixty-eight towns don't have, because we have this unusual thing called the internal service fund that nobody else has. Okay, so just to be clear, it's an amazing thing that that actually was able to be created. And she only joined, she only joined the school system, if I recall, the illegal takeover, was, she joined in late two thousand eleven, and she created that fund, scrapping here and there. So I just want to make sure everybody understands that's actually a good thing, not a bad thing.
All right, Councilwoman Martinez. Councilwoman Martinez, and then we'll... Ken's next to that, okay?
Ken's next.
Yeah, Ken's next.
Thank you. So what Councilmember Pereira said would lead into what I was gonna say. So I do have a handout, but I really do think it's important for everybody in the school district, on the city side, to understand how this came about and how they're trying to use it. So I do have a handout with backup, that goes back four years. I've got only fifteen, so I just got to give it to all four years, I'm gonna have to give it to all the council members. But let me just start with this.
Then you can't start waiting till the exhibit, so that the exhibit first can talk about it. You got this already?
Now, this is an additional document.
Yeah, something totally different. I need one more down here. You all gotta make sure you can get these kids.
Exactly. The city has handled most of that. The Board of Ed, frankly, eventually, has to handle a lot of that, but the city has been dealing with that liability. Ms. Segal did, former director, called me about five years ago, six years ago, knowing that the federal ESSER elementary, you know, secondary school grant program is coming from the feds, and the district is gonna get almost forty million dollars a year. And as that money got allocated, the district decided to add staff, add a lot of things, which they did. They also decided to use part of it to cover budget costs. And because they used part of those ESSER funds to cover budget costs, for four years, each year, the school district at the end of the year had leftover monies in their budget because they were able to put some of those monies in payer, as Mr. Pereira said, out of the ESSER fund. So she asked the city to move that money in, and I would make entries to move that money into the service fund each year. And it tallied at the peak, you know, almost thirty-five, thirty-eight million dollars, which is a really good thing over five years to be able to do. The city has also, as some of the council members know, put a few million a year at the end of the year, and accrued help to try to have a cushion there. To use it, when I heard last year, Ms. Segal called and said, "We're gonna use over twenty million a year," I have to tell you, I was shocked. You know, I've done this stuff, as you know, for thirty years. I was, you know, controller in Yonkers, in Orange Town. My specialties in the city is I've worked with Board of Ed budgets for over thirty years, you know, both in politics and as a planning advisor. And I wish, and I would have hoped, that two or three years ago, the district knew all this, that they would have started planning for this and developing a plan like they did this year. This is the first serious plan I've seen the Board of Ed develop, this central office develop, in my nine years. And some of this should have happened years ago, some of it hopefully never will happen, like the power isn't, you know, the layoffs, but some of this should have happened years ago to try to avoid this fiscal cliff. Unfortunately, that didn't happen. So that kind of put the district in a position where they were like, "Oh, my gosh, we're hitting twenty-five, we need to use this fund." And because they're using Nestor and I, you know, we talk all the time, and I love him. And one of the first things he said was, "Oh, gosh, I gotta get that number down, because I don't want to use twenty-two, twenty-six million in a year, because I know that leaves almost nothing for this coming budget next year." And he's really worked hard, tried his best, with Patricia and the group, to try to, you know, manage what they can. So for him to say, "Gosh, I probably need twenty-two million for this year," is a hard thing for them to say and do. And if it ends up being a little less, I hope that would be great, but right now, that's what it looks like. Which leaves about ten million for the future, for this coming budget and the future. At the same time, the district, thank goodness, is getting ten million of new state aid, right, for special ed needs and alliance. But what the district probably doesn't know is the city got, excuse me, or an act, we're screwed by the state in this proposed budget, because we lost ten million dollars. We have this year, in twenty-five, that the governor's proposed budget did not put in twenty-six. We lost seven million of pilot money, and we have the state legislature decided to reduce car taxes for residents, which is wonderful. But while that happened, that means that we have to pay those car taxes out of our city budget. So the city is, in the whole, ten million of this coming year in state revenue, Board of Ed is starting with ten million more. So that puts us at a pickle. And the administration, from Constance to the mayor, to ID today, to the council, they've been going up and lobbying, to the hope, you know, Frank and I are hoping, and we're getting a lot of pledges from state legislators, that hopefully there will be more aid for Bridgeport this year, both for the city and for the Board of Ed. Right? I hope and pray that will happen. But it was important to try to understand the service fund, because there's technically supposed to be a committee under the ordinance. Ms. Segal and I became the committee, because the city just set up a committee. But we tried our best to manage this, so you all had monies to spread out the next few years. And the backup is here, you know, some emails from Marlene to me, just so you can kind of see the context, you know, because I didn't want anybody surprised by this. But it is a lot to absorb, you know, in one budget to understand. And, you know, Mr. McNary and I both worry, because once that money gets spent, that fund is basically back down below zero. So we would have a deficiency again, which down the road, we have to make up for in that fund, but we had a deficiency six, seven years ago too, so we'll deal with it. So I hope, I won't try to talk too long, but I hope that helps.
That's actually right, Ken, and I'm glad you said that. This budget committee, I'm glad Ken said it, we've gotta find ten million dollars, so we have a balanced budget. So I'm glad you made the Board of Ed know, we're not in good shape either. And ten million dollars, this committee, the budget committee, will have to grab on in order to have a balanced budget. So, you know, we've got some work to do too. Nestor knows, because he sat through a lot of the meetings, that's not an easy task. Okay? Hey, can I ask you all the questions out there, please? Because it's very rude when somebody's speaking, usually, by being here. So we've got to, you know, I wish it was a better picture, but it's not a better picture. And there's no telling what's gonna come out of our... No telling. And so we've got a lot to do, but I think, and I want to also say, this was the best presentation I've seen since I've been here. And the Board of Ed has never presented a project so that everybody could understand. It's the first time, and I appreciate that, but you did that. Janette?
I can go?
Yeah.
Nestor, I've got a question, because I know you weren't here for that end. In the past, we've given extra funds, and then all of a sudden, after we get our budget aligned, then all of a sudden, epiphany happens and four million dollars is found, or five... It's happened several times in the past with us. Are you gonna have a, are you gonna make an announcement after we do what we got?
Found with Board of Ed money or something?
Yeah, with Board of Ed. I'm not talking about city money, I'm talking about Board of Ed money. We've had it in the past, we've passed a Board of Ed, you weren't there. And the Board of Ed, all of a sudden, we went a lot, a certain specific, and then four million dollars is found. So we don't have any extra money hiding around, do we?
No.
Okay, because I'm gonna come after you if we get it.
All right, we haven't heard from Frank.
Well, I think that's right.
Oh, you're all sorry. All right, yes, talk about, talk about your shit, come on.
Forty shares, I'm there.
That's this, I got the name right here.
Yeah, the focus of the headers, look at the headers, and one of those, we got FY twenty-four actual, FY twenty-five minute budget, meaning that's up there. The amount that, the budget got modified. The adopted that the council board adopted, then we did a projection, year-end projection. If, let's just start with page one. Look at the very last number at the beginning, at the top of the page, is under FY twenty-five minute budget. We have two hundred and eighty, two hundred and eighty million total, then we have twenty-six million dollars. That twenty-six million dollars is the use of the balance service fund to balance the current year budget. That's what the board adopted of the...
That's the one shot.
But that's the one, the one shot.
That's the one shot.
But when you distribute expenses or with the projection, the, realign them, you gotta realign that twenty-six million dollars to various line items where they belong. By doing the budget transfer there. So that's why you're gonna see some variances in various line items, because you're putting that forty-six million dollars to various line items that were for funding or transfer. But what he does at the end of the day, after you're putting it, it means you've got money that you, there's spare money that will not be non-recurring, meaning you will not have that money to recycle or re-spend again next fiscal year, which means you're starting the year with a twenty-six million dollars debt, if you proceed. So when I saw that, I said, you know, like I said, at first meeting with the board, I said, this is not financially prudent. I'd recommend it, because we're gonna have to tighten our belts. And we did, I did, we took intention, and it was very well. So we put it right into action, trying to see as much as we can, use less of the twenty-six million dollars. Now, let me be honest, even with the twenty-six million dollars, other things happened that kind of expanded projections after the budget was done. It just, right. Then we have four expansions that are going way beyond... Bottom line, it came up to forty-two million dollars. If you look at FY twenty, twenty-five, year-end projection, the total deficit came up to forty-two million dollars. Then we went into using some grant money, alliance money, to move some expenses from the operating budget into the alliance budget. So that's a ten million dollars, you know, okay? So out of that forty-two million, this is for current year, out of this forty-two million, we started this current year with to remove some operating budget expense to the alliance, to the grants, as much as the law allows, or the grant allows, with city guidelines. Now you're down to thirty-two million. Then we need the citywide operational account for these, no conferences, no five-star hotels out of state. You do online. If everybody, I don't approve it, I made it clear, I said, let us to every principal, every administrator, just cancel whatever, out of state, whatever. If we do online, that's fine, but hotels, Johnny wouldn't send me because I'm not a... I guess that was my introduction of myself, I don't know. But that's how it's been, and we have to tighten our belts, because if I was going to put in twenty-six million dollars, I really don't know that... I mean, it was very fraught, very, I mean, I've seen numbers and everybody knows that. But, okay, nutrition center, health insurance, the district, hay, nutrition center, retirees, health insurance, the Board of Ed. So at the end of the year, you have to reimburse the Board of Ed. So that's what you're seeing here, the credit coming back to the Board of Ed. At the end of the year, we tally up everything. Oil replacement, this is the operating budget fronted, this is a grant, district cut a grant. So with every grant, you have to spend the money before the grant reimburses you, just like I did at the city, on the city side. I had to front the district money, I should say, not my money, I should have... I had to front the district money. Then after the joy, it's done with the work, powerful reimbursement, we get reimbursed. But I put it in here, that way I don't forget. That's why I kind of earmarked it here, to remind me that I put, or to remind me that the district wants that money, I'm sorry. So that's why it's here, but we've gotten the money back, so that's a gap for the... But the money that I fronted is part of the deficit that created the deficit for the two million. But it's been reimbursed here. Then we went into, you know, the board approved the first phase of eliminating positions. I think it was seventy-seven position with the first phase, somewhere around there. Then, but what happened, because in the middle of the year, all they have, you're not gonna get the full annual effects of the layoff. Then there's costs associated with laying an employee off, you gotta pay them for their unemployment, you gotta pay them for their vacations, you're gonna have to collect unemployment, you know? So you gotta net all those things out. You're gonna get much less compensation in the year, because it's truncated, or half of the year, or three quarters of the year. You're not gonna, you're gonna get a whole bank for your money, but next year, it ballooned to a full year effect. And that's what you're seeing here, seven point nine in twenty-twenty-six, this full year, which is when you get the full one-year effect of the layoff. So, but I run it simultaneously. You can look at FY twenty-five header, look at FY twenty-six, they run simultaneously, meaning whatever savings that will continue next year is carried. So basically, power are reducing for the year simultaneously. We are fighting to battle for a lot more, maybe, I'm sure. Then we come into use of the harness service fund. Like I said, the board, you know, that full twenty-six million dollars used this year, we were able to scale it down to twenty-two. Honestly, I thought I could do fourteen, but it was not possible. I played with it, I mean, not played it. We've moved these numbers so many times that it came to a point, it wasn't just for the... So twenty-two point four is a list that we can take. They're proposing to use, the boards of each district have thirty-four million dollars, thirty-four point four million dollars of internal service fund available. So if we use twenty-two point four million this year, use seven million dollars next year, you will have remaining five million dollars in twenty-twenty-seven. That was, for me, that was the, would have been, pushing it too far. But again, as we get to the bottom on the end, it might not have ended up that way, but we'll get there obviously. But to me, that would have been, that would have been ideal. Because even if you use the seven in twenty-twenty-six, in twenty-twenty-seven, you're starting with a seven million dollar deficit out of hand. Plus, normal cost of living increase between four and fourteen million dollars. So for all practical for twenty-twenty-seven, you're starting the fiscal year, wait a twenty million dollars debt.
That ain't, well, let me just say this, that ain't nothing new to us, because you always start with a ten million deficit, we've been there, so...
This is real, considering that the board have done drastic cuts, there's nothing more to cut. There's nothing more to cut. I'm being honest, that's time for everyone to, uh, so, then we go, we go further. I kind of captured solution one, then solution two, in waiting phases, as the Board approved different phases. There are multi-levels of, you know, phases of gap closing measures. Then we got into solution two, which is, you know, reduction of expenses. The, the elimination of the restorative practice, that's a first block, don't worry about it, don't worry about it in nineteen thirty-six. You had no financial effect, you know, it's just a house cleaning kind of a thing. Then I look at public facilities over time, because everybody's gonna get, everybody, everybody, every department has to get really cheap in. So, public facilities, not public facilities, operation, maintenance, we have to reduce it over time. So, that's part of the gap, gap closing measure. Then, in the midst of, for this year, in the middle of the year, the legislators proposed forty million dollars special education reimbursement, middle of the year. The bridge portion, thank God, they approved it, because they realized every district was crying because of the cuts of special education, so they had to do something. So, thank God the Governor was gonna veto it, but he later found out that he didn't have the right, the votes to override, you know, and the vote, the more than enough vote to override it, so he approved it. But that's one in the bank, as of today, to close current year deficit. Then for next year, if you look at the next year, Congress, the Governor, the Governor proposed budget, include a ten million dollar increase in each year, but it's actually alliance, it's on alliance line. Ten million dollars, however, that ten million dollars, every district has, has to dedicate five percent of that money towards DEI, Diversity and Equity Informed. So, the net, the net to the operating budget is nine point eight, nine point eight million. That, to relieve or reduce next year deficit. Then, with all those two actions, all the actions we're taking in FY twenty, on the Board approval in FY twenty-five, finally close the FY twenty-five gap, but with all those actions. But FY twenty-six, you still have, with all the actions taken on FY twenty-six, you still get up thirty million dollars to go, to close the gap. Thirty out of the sixty-seven. But we keep going further, the merits are there, the justifications are on the side for anybody who wants to with the justification, like they're all, there's reason, a rationale behind it. Then this is the last phase of, phase three is the last phase, uh, of gap closing measure. We have the Board approved a thirty million dollars, a thirty million dollars gap closing measure in order to bring the budget into balance, FY twenty-six budget into balance next. So, they have given approval on April twenty-eighth. Basically, we factored in that the City of Bridgeport proposing the operating budget, three million dollars increase toward the school. So, we already spent the money, is what I'm trying to say.
Jake Bowles, I'm saying that, Jake Bowles, I'm saying that.
Then, the legislators, the city legislators, the city budget appropriation committee, from what I understand, they proposed and approved hundred and twenty-four million dollars extra for special education reimbursement, just statewide. So, if you prorate the number to one twenty-four, proportionately, all things being equal, Bridgeport should get five point eight million out of that hundred and twenty-four million. So, we already spent the money back, but it's put in here. However, it has to be approved by the two bipartisan, from what I understand, the, the, the both parties have full support. It was voted unanimously, so again, they'll have an overriding veto in the Governor's office to not approve it. The fact of the matter, the districts are suffering from special education, it's not just Bridgeport. It's a statewide outbreak of the COVID. So, that's that. Then, the Board, the Board also, in order to balance the budget, there was five million dollars remaining of the internal service fund. The Board decided to increase the seven million dollars use of internal service fund in FY twenty-six by two point five million, bringing it to nine point five million dollars, use of internal service fund in FY twenty-six. Thereby leaving a remaining balance of two point five million in the internal service fund after FY twenty-six. Now, what that does, after FY twenty-six, that nine point five million dollars use of internal service fund will not be replenished. You started FY twenty-seven with nine point seven million dollars deficit. Plus, about four to fourteen million dollars, normal annual cost of living increase in FY twenty-nine. So, for FY twenty-seven, we're starting the year, if we get there, by twenty-two point three million dollars deficit. I don't want people to say, we thought that's the way to balance the budget, this is what it is.
Okay, yes, what's the last page, yes?
So, just put it out there, I mean, uh.
What's on the last page, yes?
The last, the page three is basically the itemization of what actuals the Board did. Oh, you need to cut out, okay. Basically, we're eliminating those one-to-one, uh, two-to-one power in the freaking that, you know. We could read through it, read through it, read through it, read through it. The next, the last page, basically, the Board in a total of nineteen point two million dollars cuts, plus eleven million dollars in revenue, that closes the gap, next year gap of thirty million dollars. All the whole sixty, sixty-seven million dollars gap. But you can read through it, see what actuals we're taking, line item by line item. Again, it says squeaky, squeaky, squeaky budget. Again, I cannot guarantee anyone, I'm gonna be very honest with you, I cannot guarantee anyone that this budget is for the whole I, in twenty-twenty-six. That, I'm gonna put it out there, I cannot guarantee anyone, I'll cry my best, but I cannot guarantee anyone.
Jeanette?
Nestor, I see you are eliminating restorative practice and putting them into school, in-school suspension, which is required by the state.
Yeah.
What was the, um, savings, because I know we had put, um, Kelly Service, full-time, permanent, whatever, then, what was the amount of that, that, that was, that was costing us this past year?
Uh, it's about a million, a million dollars.
So, we are saving?
Well, but in factoring the first, these employees will be entitled to health insurance, a month.
Well, I wanna see what the difference is.
And Kelly employees are not.
Correct.
Yeah.
Well, I know that, that's why I was asking you the amount, because it would be nice to see where the difference is.
They're not, they're not. But bringing these positions in how, as district resources.
Just counseling here is.
I'm sorry.
Okay?
Yeah, go ahead.
I was asking for a, accurate amount on that, because when we're moving somebody, I understand, because it's good and I know its benefits, but I would have liked to have the actuals for that, just for, so if you can send it to the chairs, it would be nice.
Sure.
And you mentioned DEI. I thought this administration in Washington was telling us that we couldn't use that labeling anymore. So, have we started to change the names of things in here? Because when we label DEI, they're coming after us.
We could change it, I mean, it's, uh.
You know, Dr. Ibi, that's what I question.
That, I'm, it's not, it's not a, it's.
We, I don't think we officially changed anything, Martin.
I can add to that. The, uh, ten percent of the alliance grant is pulled off, and it, and the state labels it DEI. It's basically said to hire teachers of color to come into the, into the district, but that's the state.
Okay.
That's the state.
Okay, thank you. So, the state has to do that. Thank you, Nestor.
All right, um, I need Frank to present his piece. He's the only one that I don't think has spoken, so Frank, can you?
Sitting next to Nestor, obviously, it's hard shoes to fill, so, um, you know, I think Ken said a lot. Ken, Ken really went over the internal service fund really well, I have nothing to add to that. You know, I just, I've been very clear about the city's budget gaps too, and, um, you know, it's a, it's a challenging time and hopefully we can just, we can all come through it together, but it is, there's no doubt about it, it's a very challenging time to, to overcome, so.
And Frank, could you just share with the, is the whole thing a little bit, a little, could you share Bridgeport situation? What the budget campaign has to do?
Yeah, so, you know, we, the mayor proposed a budget with, um, five million dollars in, in, um, cuts that we still had to figure out. I have about three point six million of those that, you know, the Board can, you know, act upon. Um, we still need to find another one point four million for that, but, um, you know, we also have a very aggressive state aid number that we have in there. We do have some, some, uh, ARPA funds in that are helping us close this budget gap that are gonna go away next year. Um, and, and I've educated everybody on this table that what Nestor said, right? People didn't plan for what they knew was gonna happen in one year, two years, and I'm telling everybody here the same thing. What we do now will determine the one year, the two year. Um, and that's why we need to be very cautious with, that's why when departments came and asked for positions, they all got notes, right? Um, and they all told you about it, right?
Yeah, so I did.
But I, but I also see what's coming down the pike, and we, and we need to make sure that we plan, uh, so we don't find ourselves in a similar situation.
And I, I did, I did, I did give Frank, I did meet with the delegation and the state senators, or, or online, because everybody was voting, so it was kind of like a rush meeting, but, um, they did give reinforcements that both the House and the Senate are really working, um, that, and those monies that come from Fed to, to help, to make sure Bridgeport gets, gets its fair share. But I did mention to them that it is unfortunate that when we look at, you know, the aid that we get as a municipality versus Hartford and New Haven, you know, they get a beat, at least twenty to twenty-five million more than we do. So, that, that impacts us in a, in a variable way. So, I did ask them to, to, to look at that formula again. I did ask them to look at the pilots, because the pilots are really hurting us, because we don't get to stay like little mom as pilots, which is, which is another contributing factor. But they did reassure me that they are asked, as they said, very likely, so very likely is good. And then the state senators, uh-huh, were previously, they said, like, I don't know, we're working on it. But again, they, they invited me to go back up next week when they're gonna meet with the Speaker again, the mayor's going tomorrow. And the Board of Ed is going tomorrow, um, they're taking students up there. So, I think just being in front of them, I told Kevin Reynolds, and Kevin Reynolds also reassured me that, you know, we're, we're past the fifty percent, we wanted like sixty, sixty-five. So, it's just about when the number runs come in, we'll know exactly what we're gonna get, but and, and action-wise, I think we still have to be very, a, a little frugal in what we're gonna be doing, and, and, uh, there, there is that ask, and, and I told the mayor, we need to ask for more, for more money, and we broke it down the other day, um, him and I talking, and that, that's really one of the biggest questions that we have, both for us and for Constance and Ma, who've been going up here, is that we need more money in the pilots, because then we have the reimbursement, we have the money in our what's, what's fun with the Board of Education. We are short, uh, at least twenty million dollars here. We have to remember that Hartford got a hundred million dollars and their debt got, um, their debt was forgiven practically by the Governor, by Malloy, and, and we were almost in the same situation, and from a twenty million dollar deficit, we've done pretty good, and we've increased the Board of Education incrementally, almost to the amount of twelve million dollars. People don't talk about that, but we have tried to make our stride. And I know that last year, the ten million, and let's remember this, that the state rep, Antonio Felipe, had the Board of Ed do an audit, that's where that ten million dollar surplus came in that they got from the Governor's office. So, your, your work is happening, it's just not as fast as we wanna see it, I just wanna state that, but.
Well, that's, that's very helpful, because I know that, you know, we're already trying that. And we recognize that we've seen all that tough times.
And I did ask for a, a, a special favor, if they found money to help us with transportation, how we can make that happen, so. They're gonna, that's my wish list, I.
All right, um, Reverend Lee, um, and then Scott?
With the exception of what we are doing now, and, and I think that this probably will be to Nestor and Ernie, because you've been in Hartford and you know how they work sometimes. If, if there's a way that we were able to catch up, or do you think that we would ever catch up or come closer? What, uh, you know, we've been in this, Bridgeport a long way.
Here's, here's what the problem is, yeah. You have a hundred and, you have a hundred, sixty-seven reps? Yep. Thirty-seven? Every one of them, fight for their seats. We'll never catch up. And the reason we'll never catch up is because their structure of how they got their money to get ahead, in Magnus Homes, in Shepherd's, in Old Gill, that was a twenty-year, I guess, thirty-year that the state had to fund them. So, you take thirty years, all that money they were getting, compare it to Bridgeport, and yeah, they had the most population, they had the most poor people, there's no way you'll ever catch up. Unless the Governor said, I'm, I'm cutting down on Hartford and New Haven, said y'all been getting all the money, you realize what would happen? When the Speaker of the House is from Hartford.
There you go.
The President, Pro Temp, is from New Haven.
There you go.
So, you gotta understand, Hartford and New Haven have had powerful people in the legislature, and that's still going on today as you and I talk, so they'll never catch up.
Never say never.
But that's, that's, well, I won't say never, it might not happen in my lifetime. So, those are the, those are the things, so it's easy for people to say Bridgeport doesn't get its fair share. But when you look at the reasons why we don't get our fair share, it's a different story. So, that's, that's part of it, yeah.
Well, that's it, I'm not, my feelings, that's, we're not gonna do myself for it. You know, to me now, that government election is coming up, you know what I mean? And, and me myself, I believe in playing politics, you know, because if he's not gonna do anything for Bridgeport, then why we gonna put him on?
But I can say that.
Put that Republican in there, we might do well. So, he's not gonna play.
As long as it's not Trump, we'll be all right. But, um, that's another story, but, um, Jeanette? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, we have some people that's funny, go ahead. Go ahead, man.
Okay, getting back to the, uh, getting back to, to the, to the, uh, the teachers in, in my school. And, 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 and I don't mind telling you, and, and I'm not saying because I work at Waterfield. Waterfield is a unique student, different, different, uh, really, uh, it's a, it's a unique school. And see, and one thing that I think about, uh, especially, a lot, a lot of people, I think it's all depending on the need and the attitude of the special needs here and there. What I wanna say about the, the, the library, okay, so now, uh, it was said that the libraries are gonna have substitute teachers in there, I believe. You know, that, you know, they're gonna, they're gonna have out there with substitute for, that, that, they said. Okay, you see how teachers talk, okay, but I'm not saying, and I was gonna say, if you, if substitute was a liability to, to the schools, when we are out, then I could see what we would save the money at, you know. Okay, so you know, after that's, that's the thing, I believe what you said.
Thank you, Reverend Lee.
And that's it, uh.
Thank you. Michelle?
Yeah, I have a, I have a question, because I, I noticed, I heard that the pre-K, you know, the, that was gonna be. Yeah, I have a, I have a question, 'cause I, I noticed, I heard that the pre-K, you know, the, that was gonna be cut.
Pre-K, yeah.
Right, now, isn't, what is the state ruling on that? Cause there was a state rule for that. Wasn't there, what, pre-Ks? Kindergarten, kindergarten, am I correct?
Yes, kindergarten.
I know, it's in the school system. So what's, so, uh, are we following still those rules? Because if they're talking about cutting?
So I, I think any, any regulations in terms of, of kindergarten, we are aligned with the state regulations. But, you know, I think that, at least I'm aware of regulations for pre-K programs. When you're talking about kindergarten, can you answer the question again?
Yes, 'cause I know that they had to have a certain amount of payers, you know, at least when I was working there. So I didn't know if the college, pre-K, any of that since then.
Yeah, I'm aware of, of current policy that require.
Only, only for pre-K that they.
Pre-K, yes.
We, we require, we say that, uh, our school districts that had, they're bringing stuff into their buildings. Now, you don't get funding for them, the district cop chose that draw. So pre-K payers, it's just additional, you know, support that we have for, for the younger babies coming in. Cause what we're, what we're finding now is that kids are coming into the school district at two and three years of age with, with a lot of difficulties, you know, behaviorally, socially, emotionally, that type. So you're dealing with kids coming in, assist them, younger, but that's, I mean, we're gonna have to face that battle next year probably. But we, we don't have, uh, pre, pre-K payers in the, in helping those teachers. So those are things that we're gonna be keeping an eye on as well, kind of watch to make sure what we need to do to kind of address that.
I have another question. Okay, 'cause I remember when we, when you were introducing yourself, and, and this is somewhere we'll stick with. Um, we talked about, 'cause I'm seeing that eliminate from the visual arts, theater, drama arts program, okay? But one of the things that you did discuss and said we were working on was the trades being put back in. So if we're taking out the visual arts and everything, how are we ever gonna put the trades back into the school? Because everybody doesn't go to college. Young people are very good with their hands. I'll tell you the truth, if, if my grandson, he was in public school system, I thank God for that, John went to, whatever. But thank God he went to flat tech, 'cause if he didn't go to flat tech, he would not be graduating U B as a computer science. So what are we doing in this, in Bridgeport now? Cause you mentioned that you were working on that.
Absolutely. We're, we're extensively trying to transform our, our high school, some programs that we have for kids within the high school settings. So as they go through the traditional, you know, academic growth, when they get to high school, when they become ninth grade, ninth graders, they have a choice of being able to provide different occupational pieces to be able to go. Manufacturing is a huge thing in Connecticut, so we're trying to embrace and enhance those programs. Uh, I know Harding has a colored art center in their buildings. So we're looking at trying to make sure that we bring back some of those things. Sometimes industry, industry kind of guides, you know, economic development guides a lot of the things that we do within the systems. But all the high schools are in that, in the middle of that transformation of what are the interests of the kids in the buildings? And then we're dividing, re, re, recreating those programs in order for, in order to keep the interest of the kids to stay, to keep them connected. So there's a lot of that going on. Uh, so kids will have a choice of which pathway they go through in all the high schools that we have in the district. So a lot of that is there, uh, and we just have to kind of expand upon that as well. So we're doing that now. We're taking surveys from the high school kids about what they're wanting, what they want to do. A lot of kids don't go to college, so we have to be able to work with our junior colleges in town with that two-year degree and figure out how we're gonna connect those kids with, with, with those, uh, junior colleges as well. So there's a lot of that going on at the high school level. You don't hear a lot of what's going on at the high school level. And that's one of the things that we're getting ready to try to do is to rebrand the, the great things that we, we have great things going on in this district. And we have to toot our own horn a little bit. So we're gonna, we're getting ready to unveil a branded website, things that people understand that we can tell our story, you know, and putting our kids out in front. That's one of the reasons why we're going tomorrow to Hartford. Uh, we have forty-five kids that's going to be dressed to impress and be able to get up there to the legislators and talk about the needs of this district. And so if we can show and, and, and be role models for them, they will take it and go with it. So that's the key right there. So the interest is, is important. So we're doing a little bit of that and trying to make sure that we, we build programs for those kids that may not be going to college.
Good, thank you. Cause I wanted to know financially how that impacted, so.
All right, thank you. Uh, I noticed we did not talk about capital. Oh, okay, I didn't know you had something. All right, there, Coach, yeah, I didn't know you had questions. I thought I was closing out.
Thank you, thank you, Chair. Um, so I wanna thank you both for being here and, and everyone. Uh, 'cause we wanna do the best we can to right the ship. Uh, but I just wanna ask a couple of questions from what we've gotten in our budget books, which I realize, you know, this is probably sixty days old at this point, and probably throw it out, right? But, uh, so two questions, uh, two line items, and I, and then you can speak to them. Uh, so the elementary teacher line, uh, I remember last year, the request was for forty-four million. This year it's sixty-two million. Uh, the actuals prior two years, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm on page four forty-two. I, I apologize for that. Uh, so the, the actuals are thirty-one, thirty-one. Last year's ask was forty-four. This year's ask is sixty-two. And then on four sixty-three, again, one of the expenses that we, we, we have to bear. Uh, but special ed transportation, so the actuals, uh, twenty-three, twenty-four were both around fifteen million. Uh, last year's budget was requested ten, this year about five and a half. So how do those numbers figure in with the overall ask?
The Board, well, the Board of Education, they, they have the luxury of doing, not the luxury. They transfer money to different line items based on need. This year we're gonna run over six hundred dollars in special ed. So they're gonna move monies wherever they can to pay the invoices, something which we can't. So they, what they ask of, what, they, we had to ask for money, sometimes it's time for a request to.
So just to, to follow up, Chair. So the, so what I'm hearing is, because on the city side, we have restrictions in terms of rights first.
Right, right, right.
And it's, uh, is essentially, you're kind of making a, a rough outline?
Yes.
And at the end of the day, you move around what you need to move around, there's no restriction per se?
Because vendors, vendors, when I say vendors, these schools, these schools, special ed schools, transportation companies, different, but they send you an invoice when you have a lot of district students you have to pay.
Yeah, yeah.
So the other choice is, the fact we're not gonna need that money either. If you have vacancies, positions you haven't filled, or you know you're not gonna fill, they're being commanded by substitute. You saved enough money for today because they're vacant. You take the saving, pay your bills, and keep going.
Okay, so, all saves, like, just, again, we, we don't decide on this budget. But for us to look at it, I think it would be helpful to be in the neighborhood?
I'm gonna stream live again.
So we can all kind of, you know?
Yeah, I'm gonna stream live, as we can, as we go. Next year is gonna be a rebrand, realigned to where things will be.
Very good.
Let me put you down.
Thank you, Chair. One thing I want, I wanna make the council aware of as well, we, we have, the state is, is going to be doing a, 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 a very intensive, uh, forensic audit. Uh, probably in the next two weeks, they'll have some, uh, company coming in to be able to do that, to really kind of, you know, really look deep into how we've done budgets and how we've spent money over the last ten, fifteen years. And so that's gonna be the telltale, uh, sign in the forecast of what has happened. It'll be able to tell the story. We welcome that. I think that's important for any new superintendent coming into a district. I think it's important to have a roadmap of how and what needs to happen, if it needs to change. There is some operational things that we're going to be able to put some things in place to, to make better for us. Uh, and, and some, 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 some opportunities to be able to do business different. Uh, and also there's an opportunity to, uh, hold people accountable for the things they need to be held accountable for, right? Uh, we have a lot of dogs in the bill, in, in our system that we have to be able to, you know, we have to train and coach and teach, uh, but also hold people accountable. So that's what it's all about. So that's important for this administration to be able to do and, and willing to do. Uh, we're not shy about that. And so that's important for you guys to know. I think our board is aware of that as well. Uh, and so the time is now, and, and we have a great, uh, opportunity with the audit, uh, coming in to be able to do that. So I, I, I look forward to that.
Just, I got, before I speak to, um, the, um, capital piece, who, who's paying for the audit?
The state.
The state.
State is paying for it?
Right. The state is, is articulating the person, I mean, the, the, the organization coming in, and they are taking care of it.
That's a miracle.
Just, just, I'm gonna just, I just wanna give credit to where credit is due. I'm gonna say this, again, I'm not one of those that's so into under the bus. I'm just gonna say this, Marlene, so everybody know Marlene's who was the CFO for Board of Ed, very prudent with financials. I'm just gonna put it out there, I'm, I'm, I don't prove it to under the bus, which is not me. She was very prudent with, with desperate to manage. That I, I will give her the credit, that I, I, I'm not saying that I stand by it.
Well, I, Ken, hey, Ken, Nestor, I'm not gonna tell you a word for us what you thought, but I'll.
I have a question. Are you gonna use Muniz? Do you use Muniz?
Yes.
Before, um, Amy Marie, I, I want to, I'll let her answer, and then I, I wanna talk about the capital side and speak on. Mr. Garcia, go right here.
Thank you. I'm just, uh, council's budget, with council members that come to the meetings, they're working very hard to work on this whole budget citywide, which includes the Board of Ed. So we're trying to feed everybody, and I've always brought that up in the past, and every year, you know, we just can't feed one child, we have to feed all children. And when I say children, I mean the whole city. Uh, so we're working on that, but we're hoping that the state and the federal government does come down and do their injustices and bring us more money, um, to be able to share. And our budget doesn't coincide with the state, as we all know. So, but if they should give us more money, as I've mentioned in the past, that we've always done as the council, we could put some, you know, if they give us extra money down the line after our budget's closed, we can then, you know, share the money between the city, the youth, the veterans, and, um, you know, the Board of Ed. In that, we earmark towards specific, um, actually all of that, go directly to children and to the post. But, uh, I think that what the budget was this year was good enough, we'll be able to work on it. But we have a lot of work to do tonight, tomorrow, and Saturday, Tuesday, before Monday. But thank you, and thank you for dinner.
I, just to close it out, as you know, there's been talk about schools being closed and a whole bunch of stuff going on, but I want to, um, ask the superintendent or Mr. Garcia, at least hit on the relationship that you had with this, with the school construction and the city as far as being partners and teams. You know, we did a very, and I told him before you came, we did a very good job working with you. And she and we saw, and Nestor said, we shared a lot of things that saved.
Your Board of Education.
A lot of money. But I get upset because nobody mentioned that. You know, and that's not fair to us. So I need you to just speak on some of the things that's going on on the capital side, and we'll call it a night.
So I wanna start by thanking the council for having the faith in building operations and the investments you made. Although we call it capital, we're looking at it as an investment in the future of the Board of Education. So every time there's an allocation, we look to make sure that those dollars are spent strategically and that we're building a foundation as we execute these projects. So in terms of school construction, we're about to open up a new basket. We're super excited about it. I know that the School Building Committee, we walked through last week, it's an exciting time for us, right? Cause now all of our high schools are complete, right? So that's, that's the beginning of something special for Bridgeport. As we move forward, you know, we're talking about two new potential buildings. One on the Harding site, which will be transformative, a net zero building. That is something that hasn't been done in an urban district, we feel strongly about that. And then the potential of building a specialized school, we talk about special ed and the cost, those, those costs that we are spending sending children out of the district. We wanna offset those costs by having that programming here. So, you know, when we look at what we're doing here in Bridgeport, we've done exhaustive study through the facilities master plan and understanding, you know, that as we make our decisions moving forward, we have a ten-year roadmap, and we have the data. So when we come to you, we're giving you the facts and data to support the requests. And with that said, as we move forward, you know, it's important for us to continue to dialogue. Cause one of the things that, since I've come back, this is my third step back, believe it or not, um, since I've come back, we've had open dialogue, you know, I've talked to the chairs on a regular basis, I've talked to the committee, the school building committee. You know, we're having conversations at a granular level that gives us the ability to start to say, you know what? This may be coming down the pipe. This is a, a option that we may wanna explore, and these are recommendations that may make sense. A lot of this takes time, and I gotta thank my team for long nights, 'cause, you know, we work weekends, we work long nights. But everyone is feeling the energy of something new. And it's something that we always haven't had, you know, this bridge that, that we have now. So, you know, to Ernie's point, I mean, the communication and the investment, right? Cause we talk about what happens in terms of the budget investment, but there's also the capital investment. And Nestor and Ken have been great over the last few years and lived the years spending, if there was money that was left, they'd give it to us. We've been able to do the lots at Black, at Blackham, Reed School, uh, Marin, JFK. I mean, we've done some transformative work. I mean, you know, they gave me three weeks to do the work, but we get it done. You know, but we appreciate the investment, we appreciate the dialogue. Thank you guys so much for all you do.
Thank you, sir.
I, I, I wanna kind of piggyback on that because I, I hadn't had a lot of experience working with the council and the city. But I, I, I appreciate the, the, the open arms, everybody has given me, we're trying to do this work. This has been a tough position that I've been in, but I think it's important to be committed to the, to, to the work. We have amazing people. My team guys, they work long hours, they're right behind me everywhere I am to support what I do. Uh, I, I, my board, I think they've been, they've done a good job of trying to shift and move to a whole different space. Uh, and so the time is now, and I think everybody sees that. So we need your, your, your support and your collaboration. Uh, we gotta fight this fight for the kids. And so I think it's important, uh, we're gonna have our disagreements, that's part of the, that's part of the project, right? But it's okay. Uh, and so let's get this thing together, let's get the job done, get across the finish line, and let's make it work for kids.
All right, um.
Yeah, I, I just, again, I'm hoping that our legislators here, that we know, right? They can find some money to give to our Board of Ed, number one. Number two, I hope and I expect that the money that is being spent on this new basket, which I hear is great, that is kept up, that is kept clean, that we engage our youth in that school, to take pride in that school. You have a gentleman, a teacher, and I just met him two weeks ago, when we recognized him in the chambers lasting years. What he's doing at the old basket, right, is great work. The other thing is that I know, or that, that the gentleman right here that is standing, Mr. Garcia, he is one individual that if he asks you to do something, it's because he's done it already. He's not afraid to arsan las camisa and get to work. But again, he, he, I mean, like I said, I'm very proud of him, I am glad, I'm sorry we lost him on our side, but I'm glad that, okay, the Board of Ed got him, cause he is one hell of a worker. But again, please keep our new basket in shape, as it conditions that it is right now. And then, along with other schools. And then, along with other schools, Waltersville, Marin, these are new schools. And it's sad when I've been in that building and I see the walls are dirty. There should not be. Somehow, someone should work on self-esteem on all the children in the school system so that they can feel proud when they go.
Thank you. All right, our last person before I go, because you've got some things. We want you to be prepared for the budget.
Sure.
Yes.
When does, when does it start to see any Basse?
We can set up some time, probably in the next two weeks. We're getting there. Still a little chaotic and I don't wanna trip it over anything, you know, no conversation.
All right, Scott, give us some headlines for Saturday and tomorrow, I'm sorry, I skipped the date. Tomorrow and Saturday. Or maybe Sunday. We don't know.
Just stay, you just stay over to three or five more.
First of all, I would just like to thank Dr. Avery for being here.
Thank you.
For our local friend Nestor, for spelling things out. Again, continuing the dialogue about, again, how to get things back on track.
Come on, come on, come on.
So, yeah, so again, thank you to Dr. Avery and team and Nestor. Let's, you know, continue to discuss. I shared with the committee a spreadsheet this morning with some ideas about how to get to where we need to get.
So, but you all believe that you like to.
Oh, yeah. Thank you very much. All right, just wait a second, until everybody leaves.
Let's wait till everybody leaves. Thank you for the phone, too.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, okay.
Good night.
Give it to them. Thank you for the, thank you for the very show today.
Brett, take it out, someone have a representative. Brett, you wanna talk?
We have, which meeting still going on?
All right.
Okay, yeah, not to be saying. Trying to all state secrets, just trying to make sure we hear what we're saying. So, again, the co-chairs met with the mayor and Ken and Frank, gosh, that was yesterday? Is that kinda weekend? And we looked at some of the proposed changes in the budget, both, you know, increases and decreases, decreases revenue and expenditure. I added some to reflect some of my thoughts, but also what we've heard from the committee. So, I would ask the committee to take a good look at it. And again, if you have some specific ideas, one councilwoman sent some very specific questions today, which is great because that's the kinda thing we wanna drill down on, we don't wanna be too high in the sky at this point. So, if you do have some specific thoughts, let's get going on it. Brett, definitely.
I would just say if there's any like personnel changes or any things that may require calculations and you could send them to me sooner than I can, you know, check the estimates and the.
So, thank you. All right, and so tomorrow, we have health, which is our last department. Health department again is one of our large departments with several divisions. So, work through your book, see if you have any specific questions, specific issues. Dr. Rodriguez sent us the presentation about four o'clock, so I'll send that off as soon as I can. And, you know, we're getting there. I do see some light in the tunnel, but we're also gonna have some hard decisions, particularly, I think, related to education as we heard from tonight.
And what he just say, do not look to leave early. Unless you are planning on knocking it out in an hour, which ain't gonna happen. You know, it might be a long night. Many of us, I'm Saturday, not tomorrow, I'm Saturday.
Is there time in our agenda and notices that we can stay a little longer to have some general discussions? Because it's gonna be a lot to do on Saturday.
We still got a meeting going on.
Nestor?
So, your point is well taken. If you have anything that needs, the ideas that you wanna think should be cut, you need to get it to us tomorrow.
I know I didn't send the.
Or bring it, or bring it on Saturday.
I would, no, I would, I would sooner, because Saturday, Saturday is down to the wire because then you're gonna have to make multiple changes, wait for the department.
I think it's five documents we gotta do.
That's, that's, that's five votes, but that's after we make all of these.
All right, we haven't dismissed the meeting yet.
Well, Ernie, you know, we've never had to rush through budgets before. I remember days that I've been here, one o'clock in the morning, doing a budget. And, you know, and I just, I'm not understanding because we are expected as the budget committee to stay if we need to get this done. There should be no rush and I know it's Mother's Day on Sunday. We've worked until one, two o'clock in the morning going into Mother's Day. So, I'm. Four, it was four o'clock in the morning. I remember, yeah, I've been, I've been here for nine years, I know, I've been doing it every year.
Listen, we need, we need to give committee to vote it out. And plus have enough members to buy into it to pass it. Okay? So, that's what we gotta do on Saturday, so at least you know, we're gonna go through it. Good thing that we got, you know, we met with the mayor and we met with a budget person. They have found some savings. I think it's, we're looking at, I guess the hold is about, they said five million, but with some of the savings he's got, we're very close to meet that benchmark of five million dollars.
I will say this, in our preliminary conversations with the mayor, everybody wants to give money to the Board of Ed, nobody is negating that back. The conversation I had with the mayor was, we gotta wait for them to vote out the budget, we gotta see what the real runs are gonna look like before we can really allocate. So, we still have another time to vote the budget, to reallocate funds for our budget. So, it may not be pretty the first week, but we need to really look at it, figure out what the real numbers are gonna look like and then, because, you know, we're talking about transportation, a lot of people talking about transportation, some of the teachers, you know, the librarians, and that's what, that's what this delegation is hearing. But we have some of our ass, cause we are, we are, you know, the seven million plus the three million, that seven million one times, that taken away, the three million in the car cashes, those are, that's ten million of very real things. And that's where the mayor cut it and left us with a five million dollar hole to cover. He did his five, that's the five that we're covering, just so everybody's clear. So, he took care of the five from that, from that ten, from that ten, eleven that we're missing and the ask is about fifteen, sixteen. So, you know, I, we've done a great job of giving out to Board of Ed many years. From, from seventy-four thousand my first year as a council member, to giving one point five to two million a year, now we're up to three million a year. That, those are very strong numbers. They, we get criticized, cause it's not ten or twenty or thirty million, but our state rep got them ten million in last year. So, there are strikes being, being done, like, we don't see it, we don't feel it because it's not a big number that we see, but, but it's there. And I think there's a place to do it there, but we also have to find other cuts. And, and, and Ernie said it yesterday, what did you say yesterday? We wanna do the whole ten, twenty million, what we're gonna do?
And close fire stations, let police go, fire people off public facilities. So, I think you gotta look at it, you got three, three big agencies, at least five are the works. Got three big ones.
I'm right here.
So, you know, it's something that we gotta look at, but not a little bit too. There are a lot of departments that wanna add some people. And I think we should look at it, the ones that really are gonna use it the right way, that generates revenue for us, but we got some work this time.
And the other thing about revenues, if you know that there's a place where we can generate revenues or increase fees, you have to propose it, because we're gonna have to have a discussion on it and vote on it. So, if you have a revenue that you're thinking about that can impact the budget, propose it. It's not just about cuts, we're also responsible for generating revenues. Like the hook ordinance, like, we need to really run those numbers, cause that's something that we need to talk about, that we need to get that from the chief. The chief need to give us how many clubs, social clubs we have, hook alarms we have, that's a real revenue. Maybe, maybe five to six thousand. Also, the real numbers, I think, we need to relook at the numbers, cause I was in Hartford today and we talked, and I talked to someone from another city and their bus patrol numbers are almost winning a million dollars in revenues. So, I don't, I don't know what she was talking about, but the bus, the bus ticket. So, hey, we need to look at the real projected amount of that, so. And I'll just kinda love. Yeah, so, that was, that's just one thing that came to my memory now, but the revenues.
Councilwoman?
I, I just wanna, to our, our chair's point, I don't think that coming, maybe eliminate a fire station, but God forbid we have a heavy wood fire here. And we eliminate firehouses. We cannot do that. We have public safety for purposes that we need them for. God forbid this city turns back into nineteen ninety, right now. We should probably look, which today, I was kind of, my whole morning, I was going through the budget, page by page and trying to, to our council president's point, pick some revenues, where are we with? I've emailed the chief of police, where are we with these applications? Till this very day, no one has submitted any application for the hook up, which means we have zero money on those applications, which is a violation of the ordinance, which should be enforced. We should start making sure that our flight department is enforcing. We're not getting really too much revenue out of that because it's not being enforced the way that it should. So, I mean, there's a lot of things that we should be receiving high numbers on, but we're truly not because, I mean, today I emailed Scott on our booty. I just talked to Ken about it, I wanna see the contract again. I wanna see if our booty contract is being done up to par. Are they hitting these cars the way that they should? I don't believe they should, I think they're doing it as they feel like doing it. Those are things that we should be really focusing on, the tickets, outstanding tickets, even the meters, I have a serious concern on the meter emptiness, where I see civilians empty in our meters with, I mean, your city employees, but there's no police accompanying them. How do we know that that revenue is being all turned into the city? We don't. I mean, we, we have a lot of serious monies lingering that should be really in our, in our account, which we probably can't account for because we are not focusing on the reality of this money that should be coming in. And we should not do it just by budget time, because now we're in a country, look what we're, I think we should cut departments that are asking for increases. If it's not something that's gonna come before us, to the union, people that are looking for higher, for positions, I mean, we have an election year coming up, favors are gonna be asked, the governor's gonna be asking for favors, elected officials are gonna be asking for favors. We gotta keep in mind that we have to cover our city in the best way we can as elected officials and not look at political favors, because that's gonna come down the line, the next couple of months. DTC chairs are gonna be asking for positions, I mean, I'm not gonna go there, but let's, let's stick to finding revenues and this is very critical.
No, I'm just wondering, you know, the departments, does wait, lines and signs?
Wait and measure.
Wait and measure. Doesn't the health department?
Yes.
Okay, so that should be in tomorrow.
We don't get no revenue. We supposed to get revenue, how much, there, it's only two people, my understanding.
Right, so are those two people doing their job, basically? Are they going out there and doing their job, or they just getting paid sitting down going to the movie club and drinking a cold beer?
And I told you about revenue generating things, there's no way, two people they go to gas stations, go all over this city. It's impossible, you got two people, wait and measurements.
I heard you about ninety-two.
Well, they've been here a long time, just leave it at that, I don't know their age, but, but if we had more people in that department, we could generate a hell of a lot more revenue, cause two people can't do it.
Amy Marie, then Reverend.
Couple things.
Yeah, I see you, Rev.
We have to find out which departments that we can get the hundred percent of the revenue from. Certain, certain departments we cannot, and how much we can increase, because we are also governed by the state. So, that's what we have to work, but we do need more revenue and wait and measure. To, Nada, what she mentioned about the security portion of the collections, we used to have a police officer going there, but the council's budget took it apart because they didn't think that we needed it at that time, so they put civilians in charge.
Yeah.
And I mean civilians meaning, you know, city employees, but for years there was, you know, PD was there in one capacity or another.
Okay, next Reverend Lee.
Yeah, you know, I'm a sticker for the sidewalk. The, I wanna know if we get any revenue from the sidewalk? And exactly how much, because C D like to double different and I'll tell you why. I always like to do earning. Now, earning pays for half of his sidewalk, for center of his sidewalk, right? And the city pays the other half. Well, who you think, where the money came from that the city pay, come from the taxpayer? So, in other words, you paying two times. You paying for, you paying for your part and you paying for the city part. So, you know, I wanna know, how much money do we get for?
It's in the book, on, on the private program.
And I think we, and I, and I think it's a million dollars a lot of coin, right?
Right now, it's about seven hundred and fifty thousand.
So, that's, that's seven hundred and fifty thousand we could put toward that ten, ten million.
We gotta send something to the committee.
I'm gonna send it to you tomorrow.
Okay, all right. All right, I'm sorry.
Oh, I think we need to also look at the Buildings Department. They continuously delay progress in that office, so that delay costs us money. And I'm hearing it from a lot of developers and private owners, that they're saying they're putting their stuff in, they have to wait for planning, the person who's doing it, I don't know who, but they're telling them, go to this developer or that project. So, we have a problem there and that's a lot of money driven.
My understanding is that our process is inadequate.
No, it's not.
Because you have to go to, you have to go to the engineer department, then you gotta go over to another department instead of having it streamlined.
I've done it.
Okay, cause that's not what developers are saying, so.
Well, Ernie, I've done the permit process for my home.
Right.
And the only thing I had to do was go to zoning and then everything else, because that was before the system got in, but the system is in.
It's always changed.
Everything goes online, it gives you a checklist of what you need. Then it goes to the department where they have to approve whatever, and then that's where the, that's where the delay is. Because I had to call to get my permit put, put, cause I'm like, I waited months and months and months and then for them to come and inspect, and I did all my permits, cause let me tell you, I got a whole record of them from my house.
All right, all right, but that's something, if you think of any other. All right, all right, but that's something, like, if you think of any other, um, revenue, generating revenues that from the city, that it, that it caught attention.
I, I just want to run a, we didn't raise fines, never raised fines since 2015. Sure, but, so there's a place that we may, we make an increased fine, we don't want to talk about it, but...
Which, which ones are, I didn't cop the parking fines?
Fees, you mean fees.
Fees, yeah, fees, fees, fees and fines.
Yeah.
We, we, we lost, I'm going to say this, and, and I don't care. We lost revenue this year with the increase of the parking fines for the parking meters. We need to reencumber that in our budget, because it's a real thing. Because I was in, I was in New Haven the last weekend, we were there at six o'clock, we had to pay the meter till nine o'clock at night on a Saturday. We give it for free on the weekends. Most homeowners are at home Monday through Friday during the day. I see people who come to the court, they walk in and out of the court, they're going to pay the meters all day long. And we're not ticketing in downtown. I got somebody who gave me a ticket today that they got it at a food pantry.
Oh, no.
But they're ticketing the neighborhoods, but they're not ticketing downtown. She said, I took my mother to the food pantry, and she got a ticket. They were ticketing at the damn food pantry, where the people in most meters eating at food, they're ticketing. But in downtown, we're not ticketing. Forty dollars, three tickets. That's disgusting. Yep, parking enforcement, so we have to, we have to really be aggressive in downtown.
Yeah, their priority should be park meter first, and then other places. They're too interested to go into our neighborhoods and be a pain in the butt. They need, they were assigned to do meters. St. Vincent's, downtown, wherever the meters are, so I don't understand why.
They're even ticketing, the, the...
Because they're bored.
The, one of the tickets is because the sidewalk and the street are together for the million plane, so they're getting ticketed for parking on the sidewalk, when they're not on the sidewalk.
They're on the ground.
So, there's money.
All right, can I do this?
Motion to adjourn.